Okay, can we proceed? We have all the attendees.
Not quite yet, still waiting for councilmember here. Okay, here she is, one moment.
Hi, everybody.
Hey there, welcome. All right, let's get started. So it's my pleasure to call to order the regular meeting of the Tiburon Town Council on November 2nd, 5 o'clock. Lee, can you please take a roll call?
Yes, councilmember Fredericks.
Here.
Councilmember Griffin is absent, councilmember here.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Here.
And Mayor Weller.
Here. Okay, so our first item of business is oral communications. This is the part of the meeting where we ask members of the public if they'd like to comment on something that is not on the agenda. Lee, can you provide instructions?
Yes, thank you. If you would like to make a comment during this meeting, please use the raise hand feature of Zoom, which will indicate to me you would like to make a comment. You can find the raise hand button on your webinar control star on the bottom of your Zoom window or smartphone screen. If you're using Zoom, I will invite you to turn your camera and microphone on to address the council. Please accept the request from the Zoom host that you're being promoted to a panelist. If you're calling and using a phone, you can dial *9 to raise your hand, or you can submit an email to comments@townoftiburon.org.
Great. All right, so with that, I see we have at least two comments. Why don't we go ahead and start with Ruby M.
Hello?
Hi, Ruby, we can hear you.
Thank you. Just give me one second here. I've prepared my comment, so I'm just going to read it out because it was late mail. I'd like to request clarification on how the town of Tiburon applies its zoning ordinance when calculating heights and structures. Section 16-30.050 of the Tiburon Municipal Code states that height is calculated from natural grade and defines natural grade and subdivision as the grade on the approved subdivision grading plan. When you take a look at 16-30.050, the height limits and exceptions. Section C says height measurement, height is the plumb vertical distance measured using a plane established by the lower of the natural or finished grade at the perimeter of the exposed exterior surface of a building structure fence or wall. No point of the roof, edge, fence, wall, parapet, manter, and structure or other building feature shall extend above the plane established by the maximum height line from grade except as specifically excluded below, referred to 3.2. On lots and subdivisions where there is an approved grading plan that has been implemented and accepted as complete by the town, the elevation is established by the subdivision grading. The elevation established by the subdivision grading shall be considered the natural ground elevation. I posed this question in a public comment time of the June 9th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting when we were discussing the one that was discussing the ADU ordinance and, you know, the ADU construction standards. And the answer from the Director of Community Development was that height was calculated from existing grade and that staff does not go back to the subdivision grading plan to establish natural grade. I think some of the planning commissioners also commented on this, and I was pretty surprised because it contradicted what was read, you know, what I could see on the Tiburon ordinance. Ms. Tassini said when staff measures it from existing grade, do they don't go back to the historic nature of it? Partially because even though someone is allowed 50 cubic yards per year, those get graded and moved around. So when someone comes in, they have a survey and the staff looks at what the existing grade is, and they don't look what the historical grade is when the lot was first created. The Director of Community Development is ignoring the Tiburon Municipal Code, which clearly defines natural grade. I went into the town offices and I also asked another staff member and the town engineer, and I recorded that meeting as well. And they let me know that it, you know, the ordinance was wrong. And to follow up with Dina Tassini, I think that it's really important that you clarify this information because people could just throw that existing 50 cubic yards onto a drainage area that affects other owners and the subdivision as a whole. So if you could please clarify and get to the bottom of why the public is being misled on the language in the ordinance. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Ruby. Next comment is from David Mahler.
I'm mute. Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
Sorry, I was having some trouble unmuting there. Well, good evening, Mayor Weller and councilmembers and staff. My name is David Mahler. I live in Larkspur, and I'm calling tonight on behalf of the Marin Sonoma Building Electrification Squad, several members of which live in Tiburon. At your last council meeting, you heard a first reading to adopt the California 2022 Building Code Updates with adoption scheduled for either tonight or the next meeting. And the staff report on this item also addressed the three model reach codes proposed by the county to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions that are driving climate change. These three reach codes address all electric for new construction, enhanced EV charger requirements, and a point system for more energy efficient renovations. The staff report stated that these three reach code provisions would be considered by the town council in early 2023, and that this would provide ample time for the council to gather community input on this important matter. That was a quote. Well, we'd like to encourage Tiburon to go ahead and schedule a public hearing soon to discuss the three reach codes and to gather that community input with the goal of adopting all three in early 2023. We'd like to advise you that several other Marin jurisdictions are moving ahead to adopt these three reach codes now and in early 2023. Marin County unanimously approved a first reading of all three reach codes at its October 18th meeting and plans to adopt all three at its November 17th meeting. Several other jurisdictions have already adopted or are planning to adopt the all-electric-for-new and EV charger codes and that some are considering the renovation reach code as well. These jurisdictions include Fairfax, San Anselmo, San Rafael, Sausalito, Mill Valley, and just last night, Corto Madera. We'd like to note that implementation of the all-electric-for-new buildings and EV charger reach codes aren't controversial and won't require additional staff time compared to the 2022 California Building Code update requirements that Tiburon is already in the process of adopting. Additionally, the Marin County Sustainability Team will be preparing collateral materials to assist jurisdictions with implementation of all three reach codes. In conclusion, we urge Tiburon to move ahead, join the other jurisdictions that are doing this with discussion and adoption of all three reach codes, and especially the all-electric-for-new construction and enhanced EV charger reach codes. Doing so is consistent with Tiburon's Climate Action Plan just passed and will help Tiburon meet its greenhouse gas reduction goals. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, David. That's very helpful. It looks like Ruby has signed up for another turn at the mic. I'm not sure if that's intentional or if there's someone else at that location who wants to speak. Do we know, Lee?
I am not able to unfortunately see the login information. I only see the name, although I did see two rubies in this list earlier. So I suspect it might be somebody else.
Okay, let's try it out and see what it is. Is this a different person than the first Ruby?
Yes, I'm sorry. This is Ruby's husband, Mark. I signed in.
That's great. No, no, no problem at all. That's what I suspected.
Okay. All right, so I have a separate comment. My wife and I are the owners of 35 Breeden Woods. On March 31st, 2022, we sent a letter to the town attorney asking some questions about our lot easement questions, maintenance questions, and land use that affected us in relation to town easements and other neighbors in our vicinity. On April 22nd, the town attorney wrote an email back saying he received the letter. He would provide our comments. He would write his comments within a week. On May 18th, I received an email from an attorney at Burke Williams in Swarrenson stating Ben Stock, the town attorney, asked me to review the attached correspondence from his office and respond to your questions, which was good. On June 29th, I left a voicemail for Mary Wagner, and I got no response. On August 1st, Mary Wagner replied to an email that she was traveling in an area with spotty internet and said she'd be back the following week. The following week, I did not hear back from her. On August 12th, I sent another email, no response. August 17th, I spoke to her by phone. She said she'd have an answer at the end of the upcoming weekend, all through September, no response. And then finally, last week, I got an email from Mrs. Wagner saying, I know you've been patiently waiting. I apologize, and we're working on this, and we will have a response to you. She's correct that we have been waiting patiently, but this raises a few questions that I wanted to pose. Is it reasonable for citizens to have to wait seven months and get no substantive to reply to an email like this? I guess it makes me wonder if all citizens are being treated this way. Are elements of structural racism, equity, or equal access to resources that play here because I'm in a mixed-race family? Are issues of delay tactics and targeting in play because my family's been critical of the town in other areas, such as the equal treatment by police and challenging the changes the town recently made to ordinances, which would have increased the amount of density and affordable housing? Is the town attorney and the town staff using this delay to benefit some other citizens? For example, just today, work has started on another lot in my subdivision that is related to the questions that I asked in this letter. Is this delay tactic by the town meant to frustrate a citizen in hopes that the issue would just go away? We can prepare the same timeline for another issue, a code compliance case that we were told to submit to the town by Greg Chanis, and it's been over two years since we've heard on that. In closing, I ask that you please instruct the town attorney to fast-track some substantive response, and I'm happy to work with him if he needs clarifications or outside counsel to get this done. And two, I ask that you understand how this delay lands on citizens, especially people of color who live in Tiburon, and improve the processes at Tiburon to ensure citizens are treated fairly and equally. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, and we can't address it at this meeting because it's not on the agenda, but I'm sure all council members would like to request that staff reach out as soon as possible to get these issues resolved that appeared to have been pending for a long time. Thank you. Councilmember Thier, did you have your hand up earlier for public comment? I'm sorry, we can't hear you.
No, I did not.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Sorry to put you on the spot. I thought you had your hand up.
It's okay. It was a push button, sorry.
All right, so I believe that's all the public comment. And if there's no one else, then we'll close that oral communication period and move on to the consent calendar. Is there any council member who wishes to take an item off of the consent calendar for discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the public if there's any member of the public who would like to take an item off the consent calendar for discussion. Okay, seeing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Lee, can you please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Fredericks.
Yes.
Councilmember Griffin is absent, councilmember Thier.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
Mayor Weller.
Yes, thank you. So next, we move into action items. The first one is the Parks Master Plan. This is the result of our request to have a consultant hired to assist in the development of a master plan. Greg, can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if you give me a second, I will share my screen. Let me too many beginning. Share, share. Sure. Perfect. Now hopefully you're seeing the first slide of a slideshow.
We are.
Perfect, great, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Going to give a very brief report on action item one, which is the Parks Master Plan. Hang on one sec. Okay. Great. The action tonight that we're going to be asking council to take would be to review the draft request for proposal, which is included in the staff report, and receive any public comment, and consider approving the document and authorizing staff to release the request for proposal. A little bit of background, as the mayor mentioned, on August 17th, 2022, council directed staff to develop a draft request for proposal for a Parks Master Plan and bring that back to council for future consideration. Subsequent to that meeting, staff produced a draft. Draft was reviewed by the entire post commission, as well as, following up the post meeting, two post-subcommittee members, Commissioner Nick Farr, Commissioner McInerney, provided edits to the document, which were incorporated into the draft that you're seeing today. The proposed draft is a fairly typical RFP, including all the normal information you'd see in terms of submittal requirements and timelines and the such, and it should give firms all the necessary information to provide a robust and complete proposal. It's important to note that the most important part of the draft RFP is the scope of work, and as you read it, you should see that we are envisioning a very robust community engagement effort and are asking all the proposers to give us a detailed plan on how that work would get done. In terms of a schedule, this is the schedule we included in the draft RFP, which is, you know, essentially, we probably put it out on the street tomorrow if it was approved. We're going to offer an optional site, sort of tour, pre-bid meeting, is what we would call it in the construction side. Then we would have a couple of weeks where folks could ask questions, and we'd answer those questions. Finally, and have an RFP due date of December 8th. We're hopeful we can get the due date before the holiday break. That way, we can sort of plan how we're going to do the selection process early in the new year. That is really all I have to share. Again, we're going to be asking you to review the proposal, receive any public comment, and consider approving the document, authorizing staff to release the RFP. I do understand that there perhaps are post-commission members here this evening who would also like to say a few words.
Yeah.
Councilmember Fredericks, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do, and I'm sorry, I took these notes a while back. There was some statement about no impact, no environmental impact. That really was of the RFP, right? Not of what the
The master plan.
Not a master plan. All right. I noticed that, and it's consistent with some of the language in our previous general plans that were limited to parks, but the relative uses that are available to parks and to open space always comes up. And in fact, even in the documents we were asked to review, they talk about the increased acquisition of open space somehow having an impact on parks. I was hoping that the consultant could clarify what is a park, what is available for built environment versus what is the land acquired by either open space resolutions, ballot initiatives, parcel taxes that have constrained use. It'd be nice to have a clear statement of that because we get a lot of emails about things like Wyden Tiburon Boulevard at Tressel Glen spilling over to that area that may or may not be Blackie's pasture. And another thing that would be good to see is what the demographics are, if any, that drive any new or intensive uses of our parks and open space. And also, if they can embed it in a sense of the history of the town instead of waking up anew and starting from scratch, things change, but they change in a context. So I think it is very useful to have a context. What am I thinking of? Just simply the resident's value of open space and how much money they have been willing to put toward it to acquire it. And that is it. Those are my comments.
Okay. Are there any additional questions for staff?
I did have one comment. I think on page eight of the RFP, you meant to put November 18th, 2022 for the site visit. It says October 18th.
Oh, yep, thank you. I think it's November 15th, actually, and I thank you for pointing that out, Councilmember Thier. We'll make that correction before. There are a couple of other little typos I noticed that I'll correct before it goes out, but thank you for pointing that.
And did, so Post had reviewed the RFP and did, were their comments accepted or?
Or? Yeah, so the process we went through was the staff developed the draft first. We took the first draft to the whole post commission at a public meeting, and they made generally positive comments about the draft. Subsequent to the post meeting, we worked with the Subcommittee of Post Commissioners, McInerney, and Nick Farr, where they provided, you know, numerous edits, mostly, you know, minor typographical edits, but there were some, you know, topics put in there that weren't, and all of those have been incorporated into the document that you're seeing today.
Okay, great, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Before we? All right, so Greg, you mentioned that there were some commission members who wanted to speak.
I thought they would be on. Lee, I want to confirm that both Commissioner McInerney and Commissioner Nick Farr reserved panels, were received panelists links?
Yes, they did. I also don't see either of them there, either of them here. I just reached out to them.
Okay, well, we can open the public comment period, and if they join, they can certainly present then. All right, so why don't we proceed to the public comment period? Are there any? Oh. I see a commissioner.
Yes, sorry about that.
Please, go ahead. I'm sorry, do you have, are you can, can you hear us?
Is my microphone muted or can you hear me? Okay.
We can hear you now.
Okay. Great. Where are we right now?
So we just heard a staff presentation explaining that this is the RFP that the council requested, and we're about to go into the public comment period. But I understand that there are some comments that you'd like to make briefly before we do that.
Yeah, I think, I think just, you know, we had planned on just dialing in and being a part of the the group presenting this to town council so that commissioners weren't restricted to the public comment portion of this item, and so that, so we could answer any questions that town council might have on the RFP. And I'll sort of end it there, and we can go to public comment.
Okay, great. Thank you. Public comment now. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, we can close the public comment period and bring it back to the council for comments. Are there any comments on this other than, in addition to the ones that hopefully were carefully noted by staff that Councilmember Fredericks made initially?
And I apologize for that.
There's no need to apologize. They were well taken. Councilmember Thier, it looks like you have a comment.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I'm very excited about this. I know that the Parks Master Plan has been a very big priority for the Parks Open Space and Trails Commission. I think it's an excellent idea for us all to plan out the vision, and I believe the consultant will help. And I am just excited. This is a long time coming, and I think it's going to really also help the council evaluate projects that come in, and we'll have kind of a, hopefully, a framework or a map or something like that in which we can truly evaluate the projects against something other than whether we like them or not. So I just wanted to say that, and I wanted to thank our post commissioners, Isaac McFar and Angela McInerney, who I believe are the subcommittee, and also thanking staff for making this happen. It's exciting.
Okay, other comments?
Actually, I have a question.
Please proceed, go ahead.
Angela McInerney just did an incredible job of gathering the information about the available trails and access to parks and to our open space. Will this somehow be incorporated in the larger document of of the, either the general plan or the recreation plan that we're generating now?
I think the short answer to that is yes. I don't, I can't tell you today how exactly that will look or where it'll be, but I, for sure, that's important information, and one of the goals, one of the things we expect the successful consultant to do would be to do a very deep dive into the historic, you know, all the historic work that's been done by the town in this area, and that would include any work done by post commissioners and any information we can provide them is going to benefit the process.
Yeah, and just to sort of give some additional background, we've done a few, a few things. One of them was what Angela put together, which is really great. I think for the, for the RFP itself, I think this would come at a later step, right, is actually scoping and adding in, you know, the parks, trails, and lanes, and that sort of thing would be a step post-RFP.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? I just want to say I I'm delighted that we'll hopefully begin the process here of having a plan and some criteria for evaluating projects, and I'm especially gratified to see in the RFP that there's a strong emphasis on trying to identify what residents are thinking. Because I think, as Vice Mayor Ryan has pointed out in the past, it's, that's a really challenging step. And even if we have meetings where, you know, 100 people show up, that's still, you know, it's, it's, we need to use lots of different strategies to suss out what the what our community wants to do with this, with these treasured areas of our, of our community. So is there a vote that you need? Or is this just a presentation of the RFP that you're going to issue?
No, we've structured this as an action item. So, you know, you asked us to come back, you know, for this to review. So we structured it as an action item to approve the RFP and authorize the release of it, basically.
All right, so do I have a motion for that?
And would the motion include this, any suggested items to cover that are not already in the RFP?
I don't think we need to amend the RFP to include the information that, that's come up. We, what we would plan to do is, we did take notes, and, you know, we would share that information with all the firms. And particularly with the successful firm, you know, we would have, as I think Commissioner Nick Farr mentioned, you know, after the RFP, after we select, we will work with that successful contractor to develop a scope of work that meets all the needs, which may not have been particularly, you know, perfectly articulated in the RFP. So there's a lot of opportunity to make sure we get everything we want.
Okay, Holly, hit it.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second and a third, so we're We have a second and a third. So we're, we have a wealth of approval. Lee, can you take a roll call, please?
Councilmember Fredericks.
Yes.
Councilmember Griffin is absent, Councilmember Thier.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
And Mayor Walner.
Yes. Great. Alright, next we have municipal code amendments. Can I have a staff report, please?
Not municipal code amendments, proposed budget amendments, I believe. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, I think it may have been, yeah, I've jumped ahead to the second public hearing item. What I meant to say is budget amendments.
Okay, perfect. Okay, again, can I just confirm you can see my screen?
Yes.
Perfect. Going to be a very brief presentation. Let's see if I can get it to advance. What we're asking council to do this evening is consider authorizing budget amendments, well, two, two different budget amendments. One would be to cover the cost of, of four projects that were funded in the prior fiscal year, fiscal year 22. But for a variety of reasons, either weren't completed or in, in some cases didn't even start until the very end of the year or even in fiscal year 23. So what we're asking you to do is essentially to reallocate that money in fiscal year 23. That's item one, and that totals $141,858. The second item is to authorize a separate budget amendment in the amount of $60,000 in this fiscal year. To cover the cost of remodeling a town, one of the town-owned condominiums. Point Tiburon Marsh condominium complex that became vacant after the budget process had completed. And we didn't anticipate having to do a renovation until the, the unit became vacant. I'm going to provide just a little bit of detail on both of these and then be able to answer any questions. This is the table that's directly from the staff report. This shows the four projects that are related to that first action. Two had, two were initially budgeted in the police department and the other two were in public works. The first item is the license plate reader system, which you folks all approved last year via a budget amendment. And due to supply chain issues and changing a little bit, the, the, the technology we're going to use. Has delayed this unfortunately until this year. So there was no money expended last year and the good news is, due to the technological changes, we were able to. Research and hopefully in, in implement, the cost of the project has gone down significantly. So when you had approved the $60,500 budget amendment in last year's budget, which we spent zero. We are now projecting that the total cost of the project will only be $35,000. So we're asking you to do the budget amendment. For this item, $35,000. The second item was a organizational assessment that started in fiscal year 22. But again, due to some issues in getting data from the records management system, we haven't been able to complete this work. We're hoping we're going to complete it here by December. $10,920 was expended in the prior fiscal year. The original allocation was 30. We're asking you to reallocate $19,000, $19,080. Public Works, you may recall, there was a pedestrian safety project that was funded 100% by a grant from Transportation Authority of Marin. We called it the Delmar Neighborhood Crossing Improvements Project. Again, this project crossed fiscal years. We extended to, we expended 292,208 in fiscal year 22. And we need to reallocate $62,000 to get to the total project cost of 354,208. The final item, that was again, approved in last year's budget, was $25,000 to install. Generator transfer switch at the building on Ned's Way, that where the ranch is. This would allow us to use a trailer-mounted generator in case of a power failure or wanting to use that facility for. A public safety power shut-off or for community gathering center during a disaster. Again, the work wasn't completed or even started in FY22. So we're asking to reallocate that money and this year, the project has gone up a little bit in cost from 25,000 to a fixed cost of 25,778. So those are the four projects that were previously approved in the prior fiscal year. The second item, which is related to the Point Tiburon Marsh condominiums, again, is a unit that became vacant after the FY23 budget process was complete. We're, we're essentially doing a complete redo of the, of the unit, complete kitchen and bath replacement, all new flooring, electrical and lighting upgrades. And then the entire unit will be painted inside. Project cost is $60,000. The source of funds. For this amendment would be the town-owned housing reserve fund. And I should have mentioned, I'm going to go back one slide. On the right-hand column, highlighted in gray, each one of those amounts shows you the source of funds. And so, for instance, the first item, when you approved the budget amendment for the license plate reader system. You indicated that the money was to come from general fund operating reserves. So we're, and they're all the same source of funds that you originally allocated the money from last year. Again, these are the two action items that we're asking council to consider and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I also have, I believe Patrick Kerslake and David Ishu available if I get stumped.
Okay, any questions for staff?
Yeah, I did have a question. Um, so on the, on the transfer switch for the recreation building. That just seems like a lot for a transfer switch. Almost $26,000. Do you know if, like estimates, like there were a couple estimates received or?
I don't. Again, as Patrick, Patrick is the one that's probably most familiar with this individual project. I mean, I can tell you that it's a, you know, fairly sophisticated switch, meaning it's a, you know, it's an electronic sort of digital transfer switch. And they are, you know, they're significant, they're, they're expensive.
You sound like a cartoon character.
Yeah, your voice is very strange.
Yeah.
It actually sounds like autotune.
Auto tune.
Oh, still not working, Patrick. Sorry, Patrick, it's not, not happening for you.
Well, let me, let me interject here. The amount that you're asking for is not. I'm asking, this is a question, even though I'm saying it as a statement, it's not necessarily the amount that you're going to pay. This is the amount you want us to authorize. And then are you going to put this out for bid or something like that?
No, this work's already been, we've already, you know, we've already have a vendor. Again, this was, this was, this was authorized in last year's budget. And, you know, we, the project got going late and we already have a vendor and authorized the work. And the number 25,778 is the number, like that will be the amount of the, the work.
And we, because we can't reach Patrick, we don't know the background of how that number was derived at. Is that correct?
I, I know it's a quote from a vendor and it's a vendor we use, you know, fairly frequently DC Electric, so.
And do you have any follow-up, Councilmember Thier or?
I just, yeah, I mean, if he can call in, maybe that, then he can just respond. I'm sure there's a, there's a reason. But, but it is $26,000. That's, that's a lot for. Seems like a lot, but is Patrick able to phone in?
Sure. I mean, while, while Patrick's trying. I, I'll just simply say, you know, it's a fairly complicated, or you know, it's a fairly involved job, right? Because they're installing a, a new, a brand-new electronic switch on the outside of a building and then they have to tie that all in to the service entrance panel. You know, in the event that we end up using a generator, you know, everything has to be tied into the existing electrical system. So it's a significant amount of electrical work. It's not just a box on the wall bolting it on. There's, there's quite, quite involved wiring that goes on to get these switches in, so.
Okay, let's, we will, Lee, let us know if you are able to connect somehow with Patrick while we're. Proceeding, is there any other questions for staff?
I have one on the. With respect to the, the budget amendment for this coming year for the renovations, I mean, I, I'm glad we have that. The housing reserve fund, the repair reserve fund, but on the expense side, like do we project a regular outlay? Even though we don't necessarily anticipate when people are going to vacate the apartments, we've got to anticipate that there's some maintenance. Or is it just a case that we always just go the budget amendment route because they're sporadic? The, the vacancies are very sporadic. So for the, any renovation that's significant, we, you know, we normally. If we know in advance, we'll have it in the budget process. But when it happens after the budget's approved, we, we're sort of forced to go to the budget amendment route. We do budget every year, a, a set amount for maintenance of each unit we own, and I think it's $2,500. And then we sort of randomly pick one unit and say, you know, this one may, we may require more work this year. So I think we put one at 10,000 and all the others at 2,500 in the operating budget. And that's to cover mostly minor maintenance issues that come up during the year. Thanks.
Okay, any further questions for staff? Alright, we'll close that and move to public comment. Are there, is there any member of the public? Who wishes to comment on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I see a phone number. I'm wondering if that may be Patrick trying to call in, but.
Yes, Mayor Walner, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry about that. I just wanted to chime in about the ranch transfer switch. And we did get two prices on that project from two different companies. One was the electrician that we use for most work. Within the town and the other was a firm that does the regular maintenance and repairs on our generators. And the firm that does the maintenance or that regularly performs maintenance on our generators. That it was, I believe, at least twice the amount that DC Electric had quoted us. So we went with the most economical option of a manual transfer switch for the ranch facility. To fit within the budget that we had requested for the prior fiscal year for construction.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. I, I knew you probably did that, so I just, it helps to hear it. So thank you very much. I don't have any further questions yet.
Okay, so we've closed the public comment period and answered questions. So are there any additional comments from council? Alright, seeing none. Looking for a motion to approve the budget amendment.
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Lee. Can, and we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Fredericks.
Yes.
Councilmember Griffin is absent, Councilmember Thier.
Did you hear my yes? I said yes.
Vice Mayor Ryan.
Yes.
And Mayor Walner.
Yes, thank you. Alright, thank you. So now we're moving to the public hearing. We have two public hearings. The first one is the appeal of the design review board approval at eight Auburn Court. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, we do. I believe that Sam is going to be sharing for me as I speak and can you pull that up for me, please? Thank you. So what we have before us tonight, council and mayor, mayor and council members. Is an appeal of a site plan and architectural review for a property located at eight Auburn Court. Next slide. So in the outline here, you see the location of eight Auburn Court. It is about an 8,300 square foot lot in the R1 zone. It's currently improved with a single-family dwelling. The request at the time was for exterior improvements that included expansion of the front entryway. And the existing, and an existing second-story deck facing the rear yard. In addition to that, it was, in addition to the existing roof, they wanted to increase the height from 19 feet foot five. To 22, one inch. Next slide, please. So this will give you some chronology. We have been working on this project for some time. Originally, the property owner came in. And the first. Application was to create this massing that we couldn't support with the chimney extension. Because of the blocking of view from the neighbor across the street. The applicant withdrew that application and came back with a new minor alteration. And we referred that to the DRB. And the first meeting for the DRB was scheduled on June 16th, 2022. Then was continued at a request of, of the applicant to June 30th, 2022. And at this meeting, the DRB proposed a few design changes to mitigate potential view impacts. For the neighboring properties. So then the applicant came back with revised plans on July 21st, 2022. Where there were additional design comments. After these two hearings, another set of revised plans was submitted for review on September 1st, 2022. And these plans were approved with conditions with respect to roof height and. You'll see those in the next slides as to what we're referring to. So just so you can understand, this is the existing condition. This is what the house looks like today. As you can see, there is a large chimney there both and the existing west elevation is that, that, that faces the street. Next slide, please. And this was the original, the first project that came to us. And the chimney was just too large and would create a great blockage for the neighbor across the street. Next slide, please. On June 30th, this was what was presented to the DRB and. As you can see, there is a, there is a, an increase in the height. But the chimney still remains. So that appeared to be another issue for the design review board. And for the applicant across, for the property owner across the street. Next slide, please. So with that, the design review board felt that a hip roof would at least provide some view corridor from. Some areas within the house across the street, as well as a reduction in the chimney to more of a flue. So you can see in the west elevation, there's the hip and then we show you in a bubbled format. On the north elevation, you can see that better in the side profile of the flue. Next slide, please. So the revised design for the application that was approved on, on September 1st is what you're seeing today. So there's an even smaller flue. So you can see the outline of the chimney in red and dotted line. Reduced to the flue as well as the hip roof that is now included as the proposed design. Next slide, please. So this is the original that you'll see. And then, so you have the larger chimney and you have the, you have the larger chimney. And you have a non-hip roof, then you have a small flue and a hip roof. Next slide, please. I'm just to show you a little bit more from the original and the proposed from the north elevation. Next slide. So what are the basis of appeal, which is what is before you tonight to consider is that the applicant is the, the appellant. And the applicant finds that the modifications to their existing roof that was proposed in the architectural plans. And submitted for review comply and are well within the principles and the goals established in the Hillside Design Guidelines. Staff response is, is the following, that goal three, principle 7A of the Hillside Design Guidelines states. The view protection is more important from the primary living areas of the dwelling unit. For instance, living room, dining room, et cetera, than for less actively used areas of the dwelling, bedroom, bathroom, study, den. And as you can see, the diagram below shows you that there's no obstruction for the bridge when looking at. If there's obstruction of the bridge for looking at it from a living room, then we have an issue. If it isn't, and it's from bathroom, then we don't. Next slide. And so what we found is that the view from the driveway at 11 Auburn Court, which is the neighbor across the way on the cul-de-sac. Facing eight Auburn, and as you see right now in the red is the recent story pole configuration. There is some obstruction, but it's taken from below at the driveway. Next slide, please. And so we do want to look at blockage of important objects. And how do we accept blockage of other less well-known landmarks? It's something that we look at while we're looking at structures and so does the design review board and that is what this diagram shows here. Next slide, please. So we looked at. The story poles and the proposed configuration and the original story poles. So the top figure that you're seeing was the original story pole configuration in 2021. That staff said it's too. that staff said it's too high and you have the chimney, there's too much blockage. Then in the conditional approved or the one that was approved now, you're looking at the story pole at the lower one. And as you can see, there's more of a water view. There still are some bridge and city views that are not obstructed. And I know it's hard to visualize, but the chimney is now a flue. And there's a hip roof, so from a bedroom and from the main living areas, the obstruction is not as great as if the chimney remained. Next slide, please. And so principle seven E of the Hillside Design Guidelines does state about a wide panoramic view and how we can accept a view can accept more view blockage than smaller slot view. So we looked at this as a panoramic view. And so as you can see from the previous slide, the panorama panorama is still there with the water view being slightly obstructed, but not to any, none of the landmarks are obstructed as a result of the roof. Next slide, please. The second basis for the appeal was the applicant made multiple modifications to their proposed design. But the condition imposed by the design review board to lower the pitch even further prevents the applicant from installing the shingle roof desired, which was among the many primary objectives of their project. I believe you received some late mail as well from neighboring properties with that concern about the materials used on the roof as well. Next slide, please. So our response was, since the application was filed in twenty twenty one, applicant has modified the project design multiple times, reducing the scope of the improvements to address the neighbors' concern. The maximum roof height has been reduced twice, and a portion of the roof above the ground garage, excuse me, was revised with a hip design to minimize massing. The chimney was also removed, and the existing skylights were removed, reducing not only the visual impacts, but also mitigating any new lighting that could be seen from the uphill neighbors. And that further reductions would appear to diminish diminish the original intent to improve the home. Next slide, please. And with that, I conclude and within within my time limit as well, I might add. And if you have any questions of staff, I'd be happy to do so. And I also have Sam Bonifacio, our assistant planner, who did a majority of the work on this project.
Okay, so thank you for that presentation. Does anyone, any member of the council have follow-up questions for Dina? Councilmember Fredericks.
Yeah, and I don't know if you can answer this, but I guess one of the issues is the impacts and the feasibility of, and I'm just using these words without knowing what they mean, the two point one roof versus the three point one roof. The conditions of approval from the DRB approved the two point one roof. Okay, really, what is the difference in terms of height from the existing roof of a two point one and a three point one at the highest point?
I believe that there are architects online as well, so he might be able to answer, but I believe it's about a foot. But part of what happened with this change for the applicants, and they've they've come to us with that, is that this type of application with this type of the application for the composite or the shingle roofs, the asphalt roof is not as feasible with, once you get to this two to one slope. And that contractors are saying to them, you know, we can't guarantee this work. We can't, we can't do it this way. We can't provide the insulation that you've reduced the height to such a, I don't have enough room to work around this. I'm saying it in the simplest forms possible. I'm sure that Mr. Holsher or Ms. King could help me on this when they're looking at it. But that was the what I had heard was that we have provided them with a condition now that might make it difficult to apply the product as as they wished.
And so our our source of information about the use of the product that is desired is the architect and the applicant. We have no independent information from contractors.
No, we generally don't do that, but we don't have that, no.
So the reason I'm asking is I just wondered why the DRB disagreed with that. It's a room full of architects.
I I can't answer that question.
They didn't discuss. I watched one of the meetings and I didn't get it either. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Other questions? Vice Mayor.
Thanks. So in that presentation, Dana, was was there, were any of the photos that we saw taken from the primary living space of eleven Auburn? Or were they all taken from street or driveway level?
The one that showed you the panoramic view of the water was taken higher up from the primary areas. The one that you saw of the garage with the kind of the outline of the story poles was taken from the street and the driveway across the street. We then went up further and took the second set, which was to show you the panoramic. And what I kind of alluded to was that the pan, the panorama wasn't really affected to you. The waterway was obstructed a little bit, but you could still see the landmarks that you could see before.
Understood, but I, I mean, the primary living view, the primary living space is even higher than their highest driveway.
That is correct. That is correct.
Were the photos from the driveway or from their primary?
They were from, I believe that, could you enter that, Sam? Because I believe they were taken from above.
Yeah, they were taken from the exterior of the home. I wasn't able to, when I went to take photos, get inside the property, so it was just as high as I could get on the outside without disturbing anyone. So they're not within the property, for me, residence.
Which sets a little higher, Vice Mayor.
Okay, I I also had a question if you're done, Jack.
I think as an applicant, you're going to have an opportunity to to present in a minute, I think. That's okay.
John?
Yes, Councilmember Fear.
So I I did have a question on the actual appeal. I guess I'm used to more of the appeal on the form versus the letter. And I just want to make sure that the the actual appeal is just the difference in height of the roof pitch. Is that correct?
So my understanding it is for the roof pitch of the, you know, that they, with the front entry, etc. I do not believe the applicant had any problem with that. It was the roof height, reduction in the in the height.
Okay, so it was just that second reduction in the height.
That's correct.
And do you know where, who took the photos that are in this actual appeal? Because these are saying, I mean, saying view from living room, it looks like it's inside.
I believe that the applicant, the appellant, excuse me, is going to speak, so maybe she can address the the photos themselves. We took it from, as Ms. Bonifacio said, we took it from the up as far as we could get high on the on the property.
Right, I can see the ones that that I believe Ms. Bonifacio took. But inside the appeal, there are these other photographs that look like they might be from inside of the house, and I just don't know if they are or aren't.
And and Ms. King is going to be speaking next, and so I'm sure that she can, she might even include them in her presentation. I haven't seen that yet. So I think she's including them.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I knew I had seen those and I just couldn't figure out where.
We're hiding them from you, Vice Mayor.
It was exhibit eight.
I know, Sam, thanks.
Okay, other questions? Before we get to the applicants or the appell, the applicant and the appellant's presentation. Okay, so let's go ahead to the appellate's presentation, and I wanted to ask our director of community development, are there, is there, are there any rebuttal presentations? Or is it just the applicant-appellant?
I actually don't believe I I have not received any that would have gone through the the town clerk. But I do not know that, but I believe that the neighbor may be present in the.
Okay, and then they'll have an opportunity to speak. Okay.
That's correct.
All right, so why don't we go ahead with the applicant or and appellant's presentation? Please proceed, Laura.
Thank you. So good evening, everybody. Thank you to Mayor Welner and the council members for your time this evening. I'm sure you're very busy, so we will try to make this short and sweet and keep within the ten minutes that we have allotted. I'm Laura King. I'm the homeowner of eight Auburn Court, along with my husband. We're here today to discuss the appeal of the design review board's resolution on September first of twenty twenty two. In particular, I'd also like to give a shout out to Vice Mayor Ryan and Councilmember Fredericks for visiting our home yesterday. Really appreciate that time. It was rainy, and I do appreciate you coming out to see for yourselves what the situation is. Okay, let's go to the next slide. So as background, and and thank you again, Dina, for that great presentation. I think that gave a lot of good background. I also am going through the background, so forgive me for any duplication. I didn't know you were going to be as thorough as you were. So our proposal was, we wanted to replace what is a current flat tile and gravel roof with a three and a half by twelve pitched shingle roof. That is with an objective of improving both the insulation, which is not up to code, and to improve the curbside aesthetic. When we left the last design review board, their resolution was to limit the pitch to a two by twelve, so lower than we had asked, and they recommended it be finished with shingles or a cap sheet, which I'll explain in a minute. I did want to speak just to, I think it was Councilmember Frederick's question, that the difference between the three by five twelve that we asked for and the two by five twelve that was included in the resolution is ten inches of height. The one thing I did want to note as we go through this presentation is that we have called different contractors, the architect has called different contractors. It is clear that the standard for shingled roof is the four and a half by twelve. We were able to find contractors willing to guarantee the work at three and a half by twelve, which is why that was our recommendation. We have spoken to five different roofing contractors in Marin County. The ones you see listed here, we believe, are the most prominent in our county. They have all said they would not do a shingled roof on a two by twelve. Okay, so what I want to focus on is the cap solution. That is what is remaining to us as an option. Next page. So it's twofold in our rationale for this appeal. The first is that, given the visibility of the roof of our home from street level, which I'll show you in a minute, we believe that the cap sheeting would be not only an aesthetic downgrade for us in our home, but also for the neighborhood in general. And the second thing is that when we did the original proposal of the three by five by the the three and a half by twelve pitch, we actually reviewed the guidelines, and we felt very comfortable that we were well within those guidelines. And I'll walk you through our rationale as well with the photos that were alluded to earlier. Next slide. Okay, this is a picture of our current home. Our home sits below street level, so you have to walk down ten steps to get to our front door. This is a photo taken from our front gate. As you can see, the roof is a primary visual when you open our gate from the street level, and it needs replacing. It's leaking. There is mold and mildew growing on the tar and gravel. The insulation, as I mentioned, is not up to code, and we have chronic issues with gravel rolling into and blocking our gutters. Next slide. Just as, in case this comes up, we're not looking to do a flat roof replacement, but flat roof replacements are really limited to two options. Tar and gravel is no longer recommended because it's labor intensive. It has the mold and mildew growth we talked about. It's got the gravel issues, etc. The options really available today are foam roof, which nobody is recommending, but I wanted to put that visual up there to say that is option number one. Number two is a recommendation coming out of the design review board, and it's called cap sheet roofing. It is essentially, if you imagine a shingle that is four foot wide and rolled into sheets, that is a cap roof, and they lay it down either with a torch or with a hot melt and sealant. So that is, just to give you all a visual in case you're not familiar with it. Next slide. So to be fair in this appeal, you know, we wanted to, we really wanted to be fair. So I actually made a bunch of phone calls and said, I've only to contractors that do roofing and said, I have not been able to find any attractive cap images online. Can you send me pictures of what an attractive cap roof looks like? Because I don't want to get into this meeting tonight and be challenged to say, yes, here is an attractive example. And not only could they not show me any, but they actually said the following. So Larry Hadley, which I'm sure you're familiar with Hadley Construction, said to me, I have not seen a good-looking cap roof. There is a right place for it, but it's not on custom homes, in my opinion. And he went on to say that the difficulty in doing cap on residential homes is that residential roofs have vents, they have skylights, and these are sheets. So there is a lot of customization, and he said, he does not feel, and I quote, that contractors in this area are well-versed in applying cap to residential homes. I also spoke to Sarah Lopez, who is the owner of McLaren Roofing, another very large roofing company in our area. She said simply camp is not attractive. It's not meant to be aesthetically pleasing. It's meant to waterproof the interior, and that's it. I also spoke to, and I I didn't catch her name, which is why you see a blank, but the the assistant at Able Roofing, who said, I don't have any photos. And that was my to my question of, of do you have attractive cap samples? She said, I wouldn't say cap is the most beautiful roof. They all kind of look the same. Next page. We also spoke to our neighbors that are on either side of us. So on one side, we have Donna and Jeff Egbert. On the other side, we have Jeff Chen and Ramon Parcita. Spoke to both of them about the proposed roof with the shingles and the resolution from the design review board for the cap. They have both written letters. I think they should have been received by now. A, the quote from Donna in that letter to the town council says, I've spoken with the Kings. I've seen the photos of the cap-style roof, and we feel it would be rather unsightly. A shingled roof would be much more attractive and in keeping with the other Auburn Court roofs. Jen Chen has sent a letter, and I have not seen that yet. Next slide. So this is our our proposed remodel, which you've seen. It has a hip roof. We have removed the unsightly chimney entirely to make it whatever we can do that is the minimal of required by code. I would also say that we feel that we have worked really, really hard to to work with our neighbors to get address their concerns, a, and I'm running out of time, so I'll skip to the next page. We also feel in the second piece of this discussion is that we feel like we are well within the Hillside Design Guidelines, which state, as Dana said, the view protection is more important for the primary living areas of a dwelling than for the less actively area of a dwelling, and you saw that same slide. So somebody asked about the photos. When we first decided to do this project, I actually asked the neighbors at eleven Auburn Court if I could visit their home, because I did not want to obstruct their views. And what I did was I took a picture from their living room, and this is the expansive view you see as their primary view from the upper level, which is where the primary living area is. Next slide. This next picture is a picture taken within the home from the guest room on the lower level. As you can see, the chimney does obstruct their view. We've said that would go away, but as you can see on the guide, the story poles are not there, but they would be minimally obstructive. In fact, we believe the net result would be an enhancement of their view. I would just say on this one, you see on the left, the island of Belvedere, you see the spires of the Golden Gate Bridge. Those primary viewpoints would not be obstructed. It would be a slight bit across just the low or level of water. Next page. So in conclusion, we believe that our proposal of the three by five by twelve shingled roof, as well within the Hillside Design Guidelines for view protections. And we also believe that the cap sheet solution that was proposed by the design review board would significantly reduce the curb appeal of our home and diminish the aesthetic appeal. and diminish the aesthetic appeal of our neighborhood. And that leaves me with five seconds. Thank you so much for your time.
Said, wow, expertly done. That was perfect timing. Thank you for that. Are there any questions for the applicant-appellant? Before we move on to other public comments? Okay. Thank you. I know you'll be standing by in case other questions pop up. So thank you for that. Let's open it up to public comment. I see we have one person. Not sure if I want to dare to pronounce the name, but Trig? Is that? Is that correct? You're up.
There we go. Are you able to hear me now?
I am.
Excellent attempt at the name. I know it's difficult. It's missing a vowel. Trigva.
Oh, it is. Okay, Trigva. Like it's spelled. Okay.
Thank you for allowing me some time to speak. I'll be pretty quick.
Sure.
I think first I'd like to say that ultimately, we, we actually agree that a shingled roof would be a better-looking roof than what is currently on the property at Auburn Court. There's been several iterations of the design and changes that have been made, and eventually it was brought down to the three and 12, three and a half and 12, which helped to lower it. Some concerns that we have are that adding, you know, what, you know, solar eventually on it and some flutes, you know, vents and things like that will stick up beyond what that three and a half and 12 ultimately is going to be at, and the impact is is greater than just having the roof at that height. I did go ahead and make some phone calls because I didn't want to push for something that was undoable. And I spoke with a company called North Bay Roofing and Gutter. And I asked them specifically if they install two and 12 asphalt tiles and or shingles, and they do. They have done it. They've done many of them in Marin. They said that they would want to come out and inspect it first to see if the slope was correct. And I told them it was a flat roof that was being rebuilt and built up to two and 12, and they said, yeah, that shouldn't be a problem. So North Bay Roofing and Gutter has confirmed that they have done the installation of asphalt tile on a two and 12. So perhaps that could be somebody to reach out to. And you know, I think one of the things that's noteworthy is that while this is improving the look of the roof at the neighbor's home, the greatest impact is to us because we're staring at that roof regularly directly from our property. And so we'll be the ones that are looking at it more than than anyone else. And doing anything possible to minimize that impact is what we're hoping for. A two and 12 minimizes that impact. Removing the chimney minimizes the impact, and I think with a two and 12 and no chimney, it's actually a win for us, and we're very supportive of that. And you know, we hope to see that that is the result of this meeting. You know, we agree with the Design Review Board that that is a a win on both sides. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Okay, are there other public comments?
I actually wanted to see if I could ask him a question.
Sure.
Could we get Todd back?
Trigva.
Okay, he's on, he's on. Sorry, I didn't realize he was on. Could you, could you comment on the photos? Because I actually want to make sure that I'm looking at the photos that are directly from your house versus not from your house. I don't want to put you on the spot. So I don't know if you have the documents up. If you do, could you comment on the photos in Exhibit Eight? I think you're allowed.
Yeah, we see that your your hand is up and that your mute is off. I'm not sure why we can't hear you. Lee, do you know what's going on?
I'm seeing the same thing you are, so I will try to promote him back in again.
Oh, because he didn't attend, that's why.
Yes, I moved him back.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Sorry, I guess I jumped out. I thought that my time was up, so. Yeah, so the photos, the photos that were in the presentation from the neighbors was that picture is taken from the balcony, the furthest point out on of the home. And the one that was in the presentation from the town, if I understand correctly, that was taken from the front door area and there where there's a bedroom at that level. So that's the lower bedroom. And then I didn't, there are no other photos, I don't believe, that were presented.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, I see no further questions. So why don't we then proceed to comments? What are people thinking?
Mayor, if I may, the applicant-appellant is entitled to up to a three-minute rebuttal?
Okay.
Thank you. Just to clarify, I think the question that a tour had, council person tour had was about the the photos that were included in the appeal. Those were all taken from inside the home. The, the comment that I would have is that we have not spoken to anybody who would be willing to guarantee their work. So the question that I would have a, of the proposed roofing solution was guarantees of work, which is obviously the most important thing for us. A, and I don't know if our architect, David Holcher, is on the line, but he also had spoken to different contractors, and he might want to comment in our three minutes that we have available. I don't know if he's still there.
So David Holcher?
David Holcher, yes.
Yeah, he is.
There he is. I think you're muted, David. There you go.
Now you're on mute.
There we go. The very first thing we did was contract, you know, it's a kind of sound strange, but a complicated project. We're putting trusses over the existing roof so it can keep the inside wood, so really not change the interior. And we went to the three or four contractors in which I work with, and not a single one would guarantee a two and 12. And not a single one. So we went to the minimum that we could possibly do, like we were saying before, 4.5 and 12 is a common comp shingle roof, and we're going very minimum. We have to put a sheet underneath for it to work. So we truly are at the industry minimum for the roof, and that's as far, that's as far as we could push it.
Okay, thank you. Laura, you have another minute. If you're done, that's great. If you have further comments, please go ahead.
I don't have any further comments. Thank you. The only other comment I would make is that the difference, I would just reiterate what I said at the very beginning, that the difference in what our desired roof height is to get the shingles that we believe from everything that we've heard would be the guaranteed ones is a difference of 10 inches. So we're not talking about a big differential. But obviously, it's a big impact if you can't have the workmanship on your roof guaranteed. That's it.
Okay, thank you. So now back to the council. Who'd like to start?
I can start. No one else is starting. Oh, no, go ahead, Jack.
I'll be maybe not helpful, because what I'm going to do is I'm going to separate my comments into two parts.
One pro and one con.
Yeah. Sometimes I do that because it is a two-part problem, but maybe I'm separating it seamlessly. But so, so I got to say, like, on its own, I feel like that the merit of this appeal is really strong. And, and I, I don't see any reason to deny it, and I almost certainly would vote to approve it. The second part of that comment is, you know, if the two neighbors want to get together and the, and the uphill, if Trigva and his family can find contractors that will do the work and guarantee it, it would be a shame to preclude that outcome if the neighbors want to work it together. So like, again, if we're just talking about the appeal, you know, it, I, I absolutely agree with the appellant slash applicant that it's that the views they're taking are just not protected by the Hillside Design Guidelines. And so on that basis, you know, I would approve the appeal on the merits. Again, it would be nice to be able to approve it and then still leave open the possibility of further negotiation between those two without us being involved. So, but I leave it there, and we'll see what happens from there. See if someone else can fix mine.
I can say.
Who wants to go next?
Sure.
Okay, Councilmember Fredericks.
So I, I think that Council Vice Mayor Jack Ryan's chicken solution is great. It leaves us a little, because this is, this is really difficult. I visited both homes. I saw the views from the neighborhood, the neighbor's living room. Yes, it's 10 inches, but it really does take out the foreground of the water view. It's not a monument, but water views are part of the view. And it's really not that panoramic, because it's sort of enclosed by, by some trees, and I don't want to minimize it. It is, it is still a view, and monuments are a priority. You know, whether the foreground water view from the main living area is a reasonable compromise to give the appellant what they want aesthetically. It might be, but I'm concerned about something we have no control over. And so I'm going to jump on of the Vice Mayor's wagon of if only the parties could work it out. The second real concern is that any future solar panels, which local jurisdictions have very little authority to condition, will set up another increment attrition of that water view. If there was only some way that the neighbors could get together and come to actually a written agreement that the solar panels will, as it says in the packet, be put on the other side of the gable roof. You know, I would be more inclined to, to feel that the, I forget what it's called, 3.1, the the higher roof, the 10-inch higher roof was a good solution. And then there are unknowns, you know, whether a mineral cap roof looks like shingles on a loped, on a pitched roof. We have some pictures in the packet. I actually went online and looked some things out. It, they can look much better than what is in the packet. I have to admit, and I'm not an aesthetic authority, that they don't look as good as, as shingles. I would think the 2.1 pitched roof can be installed if there is a possibility of getting standard warranties. And because there are these unknowns about the solar panels and what we were presented is the aesthetics of the cap roof and how much the blue, the water view blockage, the attrition from that, if there are solar panels. I'm just inclined to support the DRB's conditional approval based on their experience and their expertise.
So I'll, I'll go next. So this is, this is, this is a tough one. I do believe though that we should be supporting the Design Review Board. They heard this multiple times. They came to what I think is a reasonable solution based on the Hillside Design Guidelines. I do believe taking that amount of a water view would violate the Hillside Design Guidelines. I also think that, you know, the you know, whether, whether, I agree with Councilmember Fredericks that we don't really have the information about whether someone could do, you know, the roof at two and 12 versus three and a half and 12, because that is not information that, you know, was just gathered from, from, we don't have that information before us. Also, what I don't think we really have before us is all, all of the photographs. And from what I've seen, it would take, that 10 inches would take a significant amount of the water view, which I think is very important. I too share the concern with solar. You're not allowed to actually regulate that as a local municipality. There's very little regulation, and the placement of the panels depends mostly on the sun and the pattern of the sun. So even if it's something we could regulate, I don't know that we would be able to, because we would have to, you know, it may make it so that the panels aren't as effective for the homeowner. So I'm actually inclined because the DRB has heard this so many times and had an opportunity to work with both parties to try to come up with a solution. I will respect what the DRB did.
Okay.
Can I just add one thing?
Just please.
Yeah. I think as, I, I've visited both homes and from the primary living views, the 10-inch addition does not block the water views. It only blocks the water views from the driveway level and the lower bedroom. So it, it doesn't. I, I was there. I was there too, Alice. We can disagree, but.
And Alice doesn't agree.
I must have stood in it in different places in the living room.
Yeah.
And I, I actually wanted to, both homeowners know that I contacted them, and I, I would have been there, except I couldn't because of my back, which is out, which is why you see me going on and off camera this evening. But I want to thank you all for sending me photos, and what you did send helped me to visualize it. So thank you.
So let me clarify what I understand people have said. So I know that Councilmember Thera said that she would deny the appeal. And it sounds like Vice Mayor Ryan said that he would approve the appeal. And I'm not entirely sure, Councilmember Fredericks, did you say you would approve or, or deny?
I, I would support the DRB's.
So you would deny? Okay. Okay. I have one, I have a question, either for staff or the applicant. I just wanted to understand if the, I know that you've surveyed roofing companies to determine that a number of them would not guarantee the work at the two-foot level. Was that information that was presented to the DRB, or is that information since the DRB decision?
Excuse me, that information is since the decision.
Oh.
Because the DRB made that condition, and then I believe that the applicant or slash appellant and architect were concerned because they could not find contractors to do that kind of work and to guarantee it. So maybe Sam has additional information.
Yeah, so the information brought that was in the presentation tonight is from the actual responses more recently. But in the initial application, that was one of the points that the applicant originally made is that in order to install, have the proper insulation and guarantee the work, that it could be done at a lower pitch. But that in order for the work to be guaranteed, that's why they were proposing the higher pitch. But the actual responses from local contractors, that was new. So they were aware of that when they made the decision. So they were aware of that when they made the decision, but the responses from the contractors were new as of this presentation.
Okay, so.
I get a clarification of that. So the information is not from the staff about the contractors. It, it's from, um, the appellant. Is that right?
Yeah. The responses that they provided.
Thank you.
From the contractors.
We, we did not, we did not as staff poll contractors.
Right. So my, um, in general, my strong inclination is to, especially given how much work has gone into this, is to, uh, uh, support the work of the DRB and deny the appeal. However, I feel like there's data here that's been gathered that the DRB has not seen. And if the DRB were presented with information from four contractors saying that their proposal was not uh, practical to the extent that it could be guaranteed by a roofer, uh, it might change their view. Uh, so I don't, I don't know. First of all, I, I don't know what the council thinks, but I also don't know what the applicant thinks uh, about going back to the DRB. Uh, but it seems to me like, you know, this is one of these situations where the DRB made what sounds like a reasonable decision. There is new data that maybe if they became aware of, they would make a different decision. Rather than intervening on the basis of the new data at the council level, maybe we should represent that to the DRB. So, uh, I don't know if the applicant is available. Is that, is that something you think might be useful? I see Laura in the list of attendees, but I don't. There we go.
Hi, this is Laura. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, great. Cause I, I don't see my face. Um, yes, we'd be happy to do that. And that is correct. That it was, um, we had understood from the work that Holcher did that the minimum, the, that the accepted standard was four by 12. When that was not, um, gonna fly, he called around at that point and said, he's found somebody that'll do three by three and a half, but, um, but that we had never even spoken about two until that was what the design review board recommended. That was what triggered the calls. And the, the comments that, um, no, they wouldn't, they wouldn't touch that kind of slope. It was too low.
Okay. So given that my proposal to the council, thank you, Laura, given that my proposal to the council is, especially since the applicant is amenable to it, um, I suggest that we send this back to design review board with the opportunity for the appellant to make this information available to them and see if they change their view. Uh, if they don't, and they give some reasons for it that we can then understand and respond to, that would make them more comfortable in affirming their decision. Um, and if they do find some other approach based on this new data, I think that could be beneficial. So that's my suggestion. Uh, do other folks have thoughts about that?
No, I would make that a motion.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Lee, can you, unless if, or for the comments, Lee, can you take the role?
Councilmember Fredericks?
Yes.
Councilmember Griffin is acting as member here.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ryan?
Yes.
And Mayor Waller.
Yes. Okay. So back to the DRB, it goes. Thank you, uh, and thank you for your thoughtful presentations, um, all of you. Um, all right. So next we have municipal code amendments that I jumped to earlier. Sorry about that. Um,
Says to continue to November 16th.
And those are continued to November 16th. So we don't have those tonight. Um, are there any town council reports? Is there a town manager report?
No, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, then, uh, we are adjourned. Thanks very much, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Good night.